Everyone here today? Alright. Yes, right here. Okay, let's call the meeting to order for tonight. Time is six thirty. Yeah. Um, I think that's the way I have to do per order. Settle the forum. We want to take a, take a vote?
Yeah. Would you like to add anything?
I don't know.
Commissioner Lankert, you're in?
I'm here.
Commissioner Lee, not here. Vice Chair Pietkamp, here. Commissioner Katz, here. Commissioner Schneider, not here. Chair Humble, here.
Thank you. Okay, we do our pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
Not a flag and everything. Pledge of allegiance.
To the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
For first order business, we've got public comments on items not on the agenda, and it looks like we have, we have one. So I think what we ordinarily do this is folks can come up and give comment. I think we have Rashina Humayun. Thanks for being here.
Hello, hey everyone, my name is Rashina Humayun. I'm the Chair of the Environmental Commission. But I'll speak here technically as a member of the public. And it's very short. I would encourage the Complete Streets Commission to collaborate with the Environmental Commission to make sure that things that you put on your work plan or work on are aligned with the cap. And also maybe, I'm just trying to think if I can invite you. Well, I would invite, I would ask, recommend that you go attend, present at the Environmental Commission and share your work plan with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. So, we have minutes to approve from our last meeting in October. Was there anything that we need to discuss about the minutes? Or I can ask for, I think the way to do this is I can ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I had an opportunity to approve the minutes from last month.
Wow, thank you.
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
Go ahead and take a vote.
Oh yeah, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
What's up with you animus? Thank you. Okay. It's going to be on to discussion items. So the first item for discussion for tonight is the work plan, 2025 work plan for the commission. We've had our subcommittee meet to discuss the work plan, and we've got a bunch of good updates for, for the commission. I'm serving on the subcommittee with our two other commissioners here. And would either one of you like to pick us off? Would anybody like to talk about sort of where we are and where we're going?
I can summarize our work from last week. So all commissioners should have this 2025 low stock load commission plan, which is basically in the cell table. You can see we've broken out the information and the comments that were getting made from the last meeting into categories. You'll see in the first area is the first column, goals. Second is projects, and then priority work and status and so forth. So we kind of, the five of us, meeting Suresh, myself, Wes, Lee, Art, and Steve, met to discuss these and kind of work towards a categorization of the efforts, structure them into similar goals. We can ultimately focus our efforts appropriately. And what we haven't done is prioritization or things of that nature. But ultimately, we're trying to gather all the information in one place and figure out how we plan for the future. So we obviously have more planning, more planning work to do, but we've kind of released, got it, and we think in a working order and in a place where we can continue the conversation and figure out what we want to do. Anything you'd add to that, Wes Suresh?
I just want to add that the, the format was provided by the city, and they would like to see the work plan in this format. And so we've tried to accommodate that. Couple of things I would say is the different stages of each of the projects within each of the goals is something that Wes came up with. So this is up for discussion if people want to, if we want to discuss that. And also the anticipated completion. We don't have input from staff specifically, so it's just a first shot at it. So then the last thing is, just I like to say is there is, you know, we have 12 items on the agenda. And we have to be cognizant about prioritizing them and maybe make sure that we pick a few that are critical where we can work on. Then I think a couple of things that we maybe has come up since then, and we can discuss whether we want to add those to the work plan or not, you know? And I think let's start weighing on that. I think, I think one of them I can just bring it up is I think the speed limits thing that you were talking about, that Stephen was talking about last time. And then I would like to also see if we, how we might, if the Environmental Commission is interested in partnering with the CSE, how, what that might look like. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And just as another member of the subcommittee, I think I can give a really quick comment, and then maybe we'll go to the, go to full commission for, for comments and questions. I think both of you said pretty much, pretty much where we're at. I think I'm thinking towards how we want to shape this so that we can present it to council and have a great engagement and discussion with council in the new year. And conscious that we have, I think this meeting is potentially our last full meeting of the commission before that.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little update on the joint meeting I just found out today.
Yeah.
It's going to be in February.
Okay.
So we do have one more meeting.
One more full commission.
So we got left in that one.
Great, great.
You have a rough idea of when in February?
There's going to be two, you know, so it's one, it's one of those, so they haven't been done. But I, I know it's going to be in February now, so.
Great, thank you.
If I'm not, if I'm not up to this.
And our January meeting on the other is what day again?
It's the last Wednesday.
Same.
What is that, January? It's the last Wednesday of the month, so. Whenever that, I think July.
Got it.
July 29th or something.
And so just from a practical perspective, you know, I think the subcommittee will have.
Twenty nine.
You're right, twenty nine. Oh, alright, last, last day bigger. So yeah, practically, we'll have one, one additional full commission meeting in between now, and then we can continue to meet as a subcommittee and kind of further refine this. But I think tonight's the night's opportunity to at least have all of us sort of weigh in on what we think about each of these work plan items. Maybe some, maybe some prioritization, what we think we'd like to, to go with and window down to. I think would be great to get input from everyone tonight. Any thoughts that staff has on each of these and how we can shake these towards what we think is important sort of contribution that the commission can have on these, on these items? What staff would find useful or helpful? And so, yeah, I think each of those would be, would be great to have as sort of kind of discussion for tonight. I think those were the main things that I wanted to just call out. So yeah, I think maybe it makes the most sense to go to any commissioner comments or questions. Yeah, questions first, I guess, let's do it that way.
I have some questions.
First of all, I think this is terrific work. So to the subcommittee that put it together. Thank you. I mean.
Really a lot of work went into this.
My first question is, I, I took a quick glance at page one and two. Is page, are, are these incremental to one another? Or is?
Some of the second page on the Blue Point Road, it's fine on CSE transportation staff.
Project list, is any of that included on, on the goals on the first page?
Yeah. I can, you want me to comment on it? So last year's plans were standalone by themselves.
Yeah.
And this year's plan would subsume some of it, assuming that some of the projects were not completed from the, from last time, that would be CIP. But that's already been done in the CIP list that we worked on already.
Okay.
The project list. Obviously, if you look at it, there are a few on those that we, that we did not even start on. One was the San Antonio road improvements.
Right.
And for good reason. So we're going to start, do that this year, right? Although it's not on the work plan, that's for us to discuss whether we should put it on the work plan or not. Jarden, we completed, and then all the annual resurfacing we talked about. The only other thing that, that I think was sort of not on the radar was the Fremont pedestrian bridge. So again, that's parked for now, and I have no idea what the status on this is, so we're just not going to see.
So concerns that are in the 2024 work plan that weren't completed, if they don't show up on the table at all, would people then assume that they did not, that they fell out and therefore weren't going to be included in the 2025 work plan? I mean, that's, that's a question.
Yeah. So, so I think, and my answer stands to you, one is, so the CIP projects, the street resurfacing, I think they're subsumed in the current plan. We have a new priority list.
Right.
So which I think supersedes what we did last time, right? The, the other two projects, San, San Antonio, and that's up for discussion.
Yeah.
Whether, whether again, that's again, input from staff, whether that's something that we can accomplish this year or not.
Right?
Yeah.
The second, the second question I have is that I was looking at the numbering system, and it's, and as it is just for confirmation, when I look at the 12 items on here, those 12 items really are 12 identified specific projects. And, but if I look at the goals really, there are significantly less goals because a lot of those goals could be grouped together, right? Like the first three, and the next two, and on the bottom, the last three. And then the number eight, nine could be grouped together. So my understanding is that's how you numbered it, is based on projects?
Yeah, I think that's right. In fact, my, my recollection is we sort of built these off of our notes of what was discussed in the prior meeting towards, towards some of these items. And so frankly, that's the only, which is not really any priority at all. So I wouldn't necessarily take this list as, as, as being prioritized yet. That's what we're looking to talk through today.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if I may add some context to some of the discussion on the 2024 work plan. Given that the project that he has been identified in the past was not constructed, does that mean that it did not fall, fall off our list of CIP projects that it's now we're constantly working on? We just had to reprioritize given that a limited number of staffing capacity. So just kind of give you an overall view of what's going on. San Antonio, we're trying to get our obligation from the federal government to allow us to start with that project itself. So Art has been working on the necessary forms that we have to submit to Caltrans and MTC for authorization. If we do not get that authorization before, before we're starting work, any cost that is incurred will be borne by the city. So we want to make sure we follow the process correctly. Jarden is complete safe route to school evaluation. We're, we're trying to implement a lot of the safe route to school recommendation in the Complete Street Master Plan as we go through all the improvements at various locations throughout the city. That actually goes with the striping as well as the the traffic sign, the annual traffic sign replacement, the MUTCD is being implemented as part of our annual streets project. It, it would be very difficult for us to just start going through and just start replacing signs. We have to make a logic sense how we're going to go about doing this. So I was going to go ahead and upgrade the striping at all the annual streets project. We're implementing not only all the correct CEA MUTCD guidance, but we're also replacing as many signs as possible as part of that project. The maintenance of crosswalk, we have started the implementation of our annual streets resurfacing. That list has been completed, and I'm trying to, how do I say this? I'm kind of waiting on a grant to figure out how much money we have before I know how much to, to build on my list of locations. The priority is going to be placed on close to the school proxivities as well as locations of safe route to school. So those are going to be what's going to be prioritized.
Yes, sir. Yeah, great question. You're still talking about that same list that we, we worked on the last week, some committee and staff worked on, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that list will become a denim to the mark of life.
Correct.
Okay.
Fremont Bridge has, we are continuing to work on that project. We have already submitted to the state for permission to, to do construction on top of the, of the stream out there. We were told that it could take up to six months for the state to give us an authorization. But the application has been submitted, so the project is not dead. It's just, we're going through all the regulatory hurdles at this time. We have re-engaged the consultants. He has revised the plans to meet current standards. So he has also reevaluated the bridge to make sure that the original design is still applicable. And we did notice some dam, additional damage on the bridge, so we're incorporating that in the design. Intersection barrier removal for on Hatchet, Hatchet Trail. The design is at ninety-five, ninety-eight percent at this point in time. We have a few minor corrections that we need to still make. Given the fact that we're now coming into the winter months, and we don't want to be in a situation where we have mud puddles, we're probably going to be advertising this project probably about February, March of next year so that as the rain stops, we can start doing construction. I've already promised the residents six months before we get this thing done, and I'm going to stick to that. El Camino Real, Caltrans has completed the majority of the paving along the city limits. They have implemented cat traps to kind of indicate where they're going to go and put the lanes out there as well as the bike lane. So the project is progressing. One thing that we're having challenge with Caltrans is they keep giving us three-week look ahead to kind of give it just, just a general idea of what's going on. But they also kind of change the schedule in the last minute depending on the contractor. So it has been very hard to stand top of those guys, but we are staying top of it. So in the 2024 work plan, just to kind of give you a summary, it may not seem that we are getting the job done, but it has not completely fallen off our radar. We are still working through the process. It just takes a lot longer than we anticipated because we're dealing with outside regulatory agencies that we have total permission. So it'll be the work.
Thanks, you guys. Did any other commissioners have any questions about any of the work that the subcommittee is doing? Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of questions. So just to get clarity, how does this get presented to city council? Do both of these documents go? Is there also a presentation that goes along with it?
Quick question. Well, I guess maybe do we want to ask all the questions first, or maybe if other folks have a view on the answer to the question?
I'll have some more questions.
Yeah, okay, we'll go through your questions first. Yeah.
I think they're pretty specific. I can go through them, but they'll probably have to come back to them.
Can I, can I quickly answer your question?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think, so this list that you have, the 2024 list, I know that we talked about staff to maybe update it with the status as to what the project status is. So I think that would be good because last time we presented this. So it'd be a good idea for us to at least have some status update, description of what the project status is for, for next time. So I think that way we can.
Yeah, I think in past years, we've usually shown council what we've accomplished the previous year. So I agree with that, is updating this with the status. And, and if, if we're allowed, I think we should show this to them.
Yeah, and I think it's good because.
It is, it is part of the 2024. They, they know all these, these projects.
Yeah, I, I think I've been to council many times in the past. I think always having this refresher and this summary is really, really helpful. And I think we want to make use of our very short time we have with them once a year so they're not asking stuff that, like, where they just need a reminder about, right? Or, or it can be just summarized on a sheet.
And this year, I will be standing up there. It's on your show, so that was just, that was just the first time that I was last year.
Yeah.
We, it was all, it's basically all of you. I'm not going to be up there.
Can I, then notice how before we move on? Before we move on, can I just before the staff take a shot at first meeting the project status?
Yeah.
Rather than the commission?
Yeah.
Because that way we have a better idea as to where we are. I think what you just summarized is, I think you can put it in on this sheet though.
We'll put, we'll put it on the comments. Is it up there, put on the comments on there?
Comments, yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
Or just combine the project status.
And so you can just, you just combine those two into one field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if there's anything where we started the conversation of, that would be worth putting on here as well, too.
Can I make a recommendation that we use the same status for the 2025 work plan and incorporate it into the 2024 work plan so they match? If, if this, the color-coded scheme at the bottom aligns with what we're doing, and that way the format, if we go forward right, is the same, we could track them appropriately.
Yeah, I think that's fine. But, but then in the comments section.
Yeah, elaborate.
The color will be great, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, now I would.
Okay, thank you, yeah. The question to, let's see, what's my question? I'm just trying to absorb everything that's here. Yeah, and just kind of see what's here and, and what's meaningful and what's not meaningful. I think, I think if I was a council member, and I'm not a council member, but if I was a council member, I'd be, I'd be wanting to know, like, okay, what streets are you going to work on? Like specificity. So San Antonio would be one of the big things I'd be wondering about if I was a council member, what's going on in San Antonio? And, and a couple other streets and projects. So that's, that's how I would kind of look at it.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, so I agree, that's why I asked the question, whether we can, we can blend into this.
Yeah.
But then there's a separate question, I think is a good question, and San Antonio is not part of that list. San Antonio is a separate project. So should we include that as another work, work plan item?
So just to kind of let you know, on December 10th, I'm going before council to have a word contract for the next year's annual resurfacing project. But in that staff report, it already does show what streets we're going to be working on in the 24, 25 fiscal year. So the list has already been presented, but I, I'll be more than happy to summarize it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's out. Based upon my years of experience being on this commission, it's always good to remind.
Yeah.
And, and San Antonio is, is one project they'll ask about, but I think particularly that they think that they've just added safe routes to school improvements to the, the, our paving program, which is something that has been happening in some years, but kind of summarizing some of the key, listing the key streets where we're adding, plan to add those improvements is also a good idea. I think that's the big picture if I was a council person, is kind of like what street? I think as I look through some of the rest of this, and sorry for the specificity, but in the first section, one, two, three.
You mean items one through three, or the first?
Yeah, item one, two, three. I don't know the first one, safe routes to school infrastructure. You, you're just talking, what, you're just talking about implementing the CSMP, is that right?
So, yeah, that's specifically to do with, we had this discussion la, you know, the last couple meetings. Yeah, when, you know, we have the project list, we have the CIP list, and we discussed which.
We're calling that the annual street resurfacing project. Maybe that's what we should put on here.
Okay, annual, okay.
Right? Be more specific, right, Stephen? We, we could put the annual street resurfacing project as the project and go.
No, that's, but that's number eight and nine, right? You have eight, eight and nine for, for your project list.
But it, it could also implement.
I don't think we should double dip. If, if you have that in eight and nine, it should be in eight and nine. And then that was my question for number one, like, what, what is number one? And, and, and I was specifically wondering, is it the CSMP school route improvement maps and the plans for those that didn't get implemented yet, which was once called in phase two, it's school route improvement, phase two infrastructure? So that, that was my, I was like, is that what that is? So even I don't know what it is.
I can try and verify if we want, we can combine them and make it simpler. The, the reason why this is in the list is this always we discussed at the last meeting. But I think it's an important discussion, so let's some, spend some time on this one, on this topic, on your question. The reason why we did not, I mean, I, I thought about combining, the reason why I left them separate is to make sure that they are in fact called out separately. Because the road maintenance project, the annual resurfacing project, may not, not all of those projects may require safe routes to school improvements. So the idea is to call out a work item that is separate to make sure that the projects within that resurfacing list that require or that warrant safe routes to school improvements are in fact identified. I think your question, Stacy, is whether you, you need specifics or?
No, I think you just clarify. I think, let me just re, pare back to you if I just heard you correctly. What you're saying is eight and nine is the paving stuff. And then it overlaps with what's in the CSMP. One, your intention is those things that aren't uncovered in the paving.
Correct.
So, so then not, this is not the council bucket, this is the commission bucket. So, so for me, though, in the CSMP, those were, I think they were called the school route improvement plans. So if you don't mind putting that on there somewhere, so we maintain clarity here. And if any member of the public or anyone is trying to figure out what is this, they can look at the CSMP, they can look for the section that says school route improvement plan, and they can find it.
There is another item in ten that was discussed separately, number ten.
Yeah.
That calls for the gaps that, that have not been, and so there is, the way I read it last time was when we discussed this, that we would have a, maybe a subcommittee that goes in and identifies what those gaps are from the Complete Streets Master Plan. And identify those projects, because this year's project we already baked in for 2025.
Or is Suresh will help me? So those gaps are things that are not listed in our plans? Or things that are?
Might not be, we don't know yet. So the idea is to go through the master plan and first identify if there are any gaps.
If I remember correctly, what Commissioner Suresh is basically asking is that there are others, there are sections of the road where we have already built some of the safe route to school, and then there's a gap in between. We don't know where all those gaps are. So let's identify where those gaps are, figure out what is it that we need to do so we could bring some continuity in those safe route to school.
Okay. So, but that, wouldn't those routes have been identified in the master plan or not?
Yes.
Oh, but you're just looking to where we can.
It's like a double checking, like, because the way we did the exercise for the subcommittee year is if, if, if this is, you know, how you would characterize it, Stephen, is we looked at a combination of the pavement, you know, condition and where we had safer route to school overlap, and we tried to match as much of that as possible. And it is possible that we haven't gone in rank order according to what's on Complete Streets Master Plan. And so there is a little bit of an exercise to do just in, you know, educating ourselves and be able to talk to council about why we made the choices we did.
Case in point, we do have some locations where there's a bike route. And we have some areas that's been striped for a bike route, and then we, yeah. So we need to go and identify where those gaps are at so we could do something about it.
Okay. It's too bad the CSMP didn't do that. Oh no, maybe they didn't do it because we completed some things.
That's right.
And not other parts of things. So you guys just need a comprehensive sense of like what's been done and what's not been done.
Yeah.
Can I add one more? Yeah, you can add one more.
Yeah.
I have it in my head. I got it.
Can I add one more to that comment? This, so if you look, we, we're going to have to work on the long-term of the 2026 work plan in the fourth quarter. I think it'd be good for us to identify the gaps and then feed into the following work.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, so that's, so those are the number ten, eleven, and twelve is essentially some of the more strategic plans, and I think this will require. Uh, this is a comment from me, but I think it's up for discussion, the chair can decide. I think it would require subcommittees to work on these, so they actually feed into that, into the, into the twenty twenty six work plan.
Yeah.
Um, and that way, you know, the way that we can help staff identify in the complete streets master plan. Then to set priorities and to decide whether or not to pursue some of those projects.
Yeah, just think about how you're wording number ten, that's all.
Yeah.
I I'm actually not convinced that number ten needs a lot of council attention, so it's just like that, we're gonna do that, and. That's what we're gonna do, and so, so it's worded such that it doesn't draw attention, yeah.
Yeah, that that's fair, and 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 I think one, one thing that I I certainly would value, you know, input on from, from the commission is. Um, yeah, if we wanna characterize things as sort of like internal deliberation, but not necessarily a work product or an outcome, you know, these could be things that we just consider part of. Council facing or public facing, you know, work that we do, that that sounds good to me, if that's what you're talking about.
Would you recommend then maybe combining ten and eleven, ten, ten and twelve?
Oh, yeah, maybe, cause it's, cause it sounds like that's what you're trying to do with ten.
It's like, it's two phases of the same project, that makes sense, I think we.
So it's like long term CSC work plan, yeah, planning and review of where there's network, safe routes to school network gaps.
Yeah.
Ten and eleven.
Ten and twelve.
Oh, ten and twelve.
Yeah. And then, sorry to be in the details, number two, safe routes to school education. Is that in this complete streets master plan as the priority source? I don't remember there being a big education component there.
There is.
So, yeah.
Okay.
And that's why we awarded that contract to Holter.
Oh, that was in there, okay. Oh, wow, the geniuses who were working on the plan, they did, they did a good job. Um, okay, number three, wayfinder maps and signage. You mean, you mean maps that get distributed to people, or you mean actual wayfinder signage on the streets?
The the request is to start coming up with signs that we can show, uh, routes to, um, safe route to school, bicycle lanes, things like that.
That that are posted on the streets? Okay.
Well, street or potential, not medallions, but, uh, you know, like a chevron, bike chevrons or something that would indicate as particular path.
Yeah.
That's yet to be determined, but ultimately showing where, here's a route you would be, can be to write on.
Yeah, check in with BTA, there was a BTA B-PAC subcommittee that worked on wayfinding. And I think Holter Mountain View and Sunnyvale members were involved in it. So it's supposed to get moved into the the bicycle tech level guidelines, but. That hasn't been done, cause I think staffing sh- shorthands. So some people have done some work on that, and it's some of our neighboring cities' members being involved. So having consistency across, the idea was consistency across the, yeah, the network, okay. Um, so number four, I'm just gonna pick it up.
Yeah, please.
Lots of good stuff there. Um, number four, you're talking about downtown speed limit, what's the difference between that and number eleven? AB forty three, are these different or are they the same?
It's a little bit different, um, we need to cut, the future discussion's gonna have to be how we're gonna implement AB forty three. As well as, um, how to, uh, start. We need to have a discussion in January about possibly start implementing, uh, speed, uh, revising and posted speed limits. So that, that's gonna be one topic, but AB forty three does kind of fall in line with, um. With the downtown, uh, speed limit as well. So we're trying to have a holistic discussion about the speeds at various locations throughout the whole city.
Okay. So I think I heard you say they're different, which I'll, which I'll take your word for, but then I also sounded like they're the same.
There's a Venn diagram.
There, yeah, there's a, there's a Venn diagram in the fact that we do have two separate things.
Yeah.
But there is a little bit of commonality between the forty, uh, between those two topics.
Yeah.
So like, we're trying, we need to talk about AB forty three, about, um, revising our speed surveys, how are they gonna be done?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so.
So it looks like we're, we're into comments and not just questions.
Oh, sorry, I, yeah.
No, as I, as I identified something similar to that, I think part of the challenge. In the format that the city has given you guys to fill out is that. Goals and projects seem to bleed into each other. For example, um, just along we're talking about, when I look at downtown city, I think traffic calming and the speed limit are certainly two things that would fall. Under that, but I can guess there are more than just those two things that could be involved in there. And so it seems to me that, um. That each of these, that, that. I'm, I thought under the.
If it's the, if this, if if a goal lines up specifically with a project, a project may have more than one goal, right?
And a goal may touch more than one project. And so that's what makes this kind of a list challenging for the reader to kind of parse what is exactly happening. And I think, uh, Stacy's first point was a really good one, which is when the council members sit where we're sitting. And they're seeing this and they're participating in the discussion. That's the kind of thing that's gonna be going through their mind, exactly what we're talking about here. And so the question in my mind is, is maybe this is a handout, but maybe there's a presentation. That cuts more to the clarity of what we wanna communicate and doesn't use this specific format to do it. I think what need, what needs to happen is this, as a, uh, complete street commission. We can't get into the detail and put it here, we need to stay at a si- a little bit of a higher level, because this, the councils, um. I mean, they're basically entrusting us to do the right thing when it comes to these. We're just trying to provide a, um, a a guidance to council saying, these are the things that we find that it is critical to us for public safety. This is kind of a general idea of what we wanna talk about. So it's gonna be, kind of give not only council, uh, some idea of the direction we're going. But at the same time, it gives us enough general guidance for staff level to start going into the detail of how we're gonna do it. So like case in point, the downtown, uh, some traffic calming as well as the strategic plan for, um, you know, the speed limits. The downtown is very unique in the fact that some improvement that is gonna have to be made as part of our next year's market resurfacing. That was approved by the complete street commission, is there are a lot of things that that is a moving part. I have to implement, uh, uh, the daylight, uh, daylight, uh, parking requirements. I gotta re-scribe it, I gotta go ahead and implement some of the no U-turn in the downtown areas. I have to also figure out where am I gonna put ADA compliance, uh, parking. There's a lot of things that needs to go on, but at the same time, at the commission and the council level, it should be just. Improvement and safety improvements in the downtown area, because the expectation is the staff will make sure that the detail. That they're expecting is done properly per code and per law. So you don't wanna be in a situation where it goes down too much to the minutia and the detail, right? I I understand, I just wanna make sure, because this is gonna go on the record, that. Well, that's, it's something that anybody could read who doesn't sit here and listen to the narrative. And they would have the right takeaway from that, they'd understand it. The the other example I thought about, um, especially by the way, after reading the positive article, I thought it was positive anyway, in the town crier. About the, um, e-bike discussion that we had last time, is that when you look at the Wolfman model presentation, safety number six. The e-bike ordinance was certainly a part of that discussion, you know, and some of the. Challenges of writing ordinance at the city level, you know, which didn't quite make it into the article. But there were other things that came out there, the one that the article talked about, which was education. And, you know, getting to the different groups of parents and students. And, um, so that's what I meant by the fact that there are. These have tentacles, right?
Hmm.
So that one goal also touches on the safe routes to school education project that's up above, you know? And I don't know how that gets displayed effectively, I'm just pointing out that it it's more than just an ordinance. Because if the ordinance never happens, that doesn't mean that as a transportation department and as the commission. We're not, we can't do anything about e-bike. Um, safety in terms of improving what's going on with more and more kids riding e-bikes through education programs and other things. If that's the case, and instead of just going, um, at a high level of project description. Maybe you need to kind of. Give a little bit of a narrative of objection, objective, objective of what you're trying to accomplish.
There's no narrative to these, it's.
Yeah.
It, there's a lot of high level information, acronyms, uh, and not a, I guess, short synopsis or paragraph for each of these, right? Which I think might be needed from the subcommittee to help someone able to read it and digest it quickly.
Yeah, so if if that's the intent, then just basically saying, you know, something that's all in line, uh, uh, having uniform, uh, safety standards or something along those lines. So maybe a thought, a comment, is that if some of these goals are consolidated. And then you actually have a slide presentation that is also an addendum to the document that you hand off. Where there's a slide on the front of the, that talks about it a little bit. In a way that the city council could take that away with them. And have that to look at afterwards, maybe that might be helpful, just a thought.
So, so we're way into the discussion now. So I agree with Steve's point in that what do we want council to take away and what do we want them to focus on? I'm not sure it's all twelve of these. I think as a commission and as a subcommittee, some of these things are like, yeah, we're doing that, you know? Stephen and his team are doing their thing, we're doing our job. But in in previous years when we've gone to council, we've sometimes gone with a list of three to five things of. What do we want to ask council, what do we want their direction on, what do we want to bring their attention to? And and this is just, here's what we're planning to do, and and many of these things don't need to be discussed with them unless. A council member feels like they wanna pick up one of these and go, hey, what's, what's the details of what's going on? But we might have our list of things of what we wanna discuss with them.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and I don't know what our list of the commission whole is.
I think, uh, if I could just respond briefly to that, uh. I think there's a broader sort of flow to the conversation that we wanna have with council, that's beyond just the work plan. And I think it's fair to say that like, we should also just have a narrative that the work plan clearly serves, right? About what we think are the highest priorities, why, why the commission exists, and where we think we can add value, and that should absolutely be clearer from reading the documents. That's well taken, but I think also more broadly, you know, Steve, you mentioned having a presentation of some kind. I think, yes, we should, it it is also just a meeting with council that we should try to. Think about what we want their input on, what we need their input on, that we need their guidance on, um, so I think that's, that's the piece of things too, and that isn't necessarily just. The work plan is part of that, but I think we should also just be thinking about that generally, yeah, that makes sense to me.
We get very little time with them each year.
Yeah.
We should use it to what we need from them, yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, and then from the downtown thing. Why are we doing, and maybe this is a ritual, why are we doing bike parking just in downtown? Like, why is this not a citywide program? Uh, uh, the answer is to what's, downtown may need more, but I don't know why we're not doing this for, with the library, for example, or.
The the impetus of this, though, was to give e-bikes a place to park on the periphery of downtown, and that was the.
Oh, that's.
All bikes, but, it, it were bikes off sidewalks, e-bikes was, I think, the starting of this conversation, so this would be focus, it could be expanded into a broader plan, but that was.
Yeah, I hear you, I've just also heard sometimes there's been bike parking shortages or other issues in other parts of town.
Yeah.
And so when I look at a list like this, I go, oh, we're looking really downtown focused. For some people, that's perceived as fantastic, for other people, they're like, mm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You forgot about us, yeah.
You wanna put something where you're saying. E-bike or parking is called out later, some other points, so you've got it covered, just supposedly, and they said, you're just looking at downtown, oh, what about the rest? You might have a little.
Yeah.
Or, you know, something, so then people don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's one, with that question, I have a point of clarification, so is the city responsible for. Working with or requiring bike wrecks in, uh, privately held shopping malls or centers?
No.
Yeah, 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 the city had, it depends on the thing for shopping malls, for housing complexes, the city has ordinances that. Required based upon what kind of building you have, like what.
Just to, just to clarify, we conditioned the developer to do that, the city does not provide those.
Oh, we don't provide them.
Yeah, no, that's, that's just.
Yeah.
I just wanna mention we. Because the one that we're talking about is what the city will provide. But if it is a private shopping center, it's up to them as part of the condition of development to install that.
Or the city could have a program.
City can have.
Just like they're having for the downtown businesses, they're just putting it on a public street, they could have a program for private, the private shopping complexes to encourage biking, there's nothing that prohibits that. Um, number seven. So as I, as I sort of read this, just from a perception, it looks like you guys are talking about. Partnership with agencies that are within our boundaries, and one of the biggest, biggest challenges to, that, that's fan, that's great, that's fantastic, that's one of the things. That was asked for at the last meeting, great, cause I'm not saying, I'm not saying good job enough, um. But one of the other big things about this is the connectivity, where those borders come together, it's like you have no idea, especially on school route, what. What a challenge it is to get the jurisdictions to actually connect their infrastructure, so I'd add the word connectivity or connectivity across these jurisdictions, something like that.
And I can just echo that that was absolutely like part of the goal of that item, is is that exact piece.
So just, where my brain works, if I consolidate this to six goals instead of twelve goals. Just by doing the obvious consolidation.
It is that, yes.
The goals, right? And, and instead of having twelve, I think what a lot of these comments are about is when we have twelve goals. It's kind of like, well, why is that here and not here and here and here and here and here and here and here? And by doing this, then the projects then can simply be individual items under that goal, right? And those projects based upon how well they're understood and what funding is and all the other things. Then fall into when they actually occur during the year, you know, Q one, two, three, or four. And then, as a commission, we can then probably very quickly identify what are the top priorities within those. And I'm not sure whether the top prior, and the top priorities, uh, I don't know. If their priorities are project based or goal based, I hadn't really thought about that, but, you know, it's pretty. I I think this can be made to look simpler that way, if I were a council member and I go. That makes sense, cause like, first of all, when I looked at the list, are are they gonna really accomplish these twelve big things in one year? Right? And and especially after we looked at twenty twenty four, and we say, well, there weren't twelve things on the list, and we can get those done. But, you know, I'm I'm just trying to think out of the box here.
Absolutely. I think that's what we're looking for.
I would, I would just add, though, um. I see the work plan sort of for ourselves, and we're just showing it to council. Though I wouldn't make it too simplified, so we don't know what our to-do projects are.
But I think there's gonna be a top level, you know, A-level plan. I mean, for those of us that were once upon a time of what we probably called high tech, which is now low tech. But um, you'd have an A-level plan that is a very high level. Say, here's the big picture. And then you drop down to B-level and C-level plans that go through. You know, the work that actually has to be done to accomplish your A-level plan.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have continue, finish?
I'm, I'm actually finished. I think for me, it was just perception details and then it was. Ten and whatever, one or whatever. That's that's all I had. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, who else? Go for it, huh? Yeah, please.
Questions and comments.
We, we, we merge that, yeah. So all are welcome.
Five and six on this thing where we talked about the bike parking and the e-bike ones. A lot of the stuff we got out of last. We talked about the e-bike ordinance. They're not an actual draft of what that's going to be?
That is in work.
That is in work because in January, I need to come back to you guys and ask for a recommendation what the ordinance is going to be.
You think it's national or are you thinking state, Tom?
No, I'm just vocal here for the ordinance.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, you could, you could call it what's national and then what state and then it's just like local too. You know, there are different things there. Um, but if that's the case, then. Maybe that's what's over on the right where it just big completion is the first order. You're saying anyway, Stephen? Okay. Draft, if there are no ordinance draft, is, is it almost, I'm unsure if that's final or?
Yeah, I mean, I think the work plan, I think the goal is probably to generate a draft, get input on the draft and then turn it into a final product. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it'll, it'll have to be a draft first.
That's on the work plan I'm just talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's an actual item.
Yeah.
Mr. K, the status, I mean, under ideation, the the term, whether it's draft or ever ID.
Yeah.
Trying to come up with a framing for these particular goals and projects. So, Tom, you're you're in line with what we're thinking, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Please, please keep in mind. Please keep in mind, as long as it is coming from ca, uh, from a commission, there will always be a draft. It's not until the commission, I mean, the council does adopt, it becomes an ordinance. So our, our roles and responsibilities is to make recommendation to council. And it's up to them whether they want to make it into our recommendations into a permanent uh ordinance for the city. So our recommendation is always a draft.
And our, and the goal is to complete it in twenty twenty five. And it doesn't matter if it takes us to meet, well, it matters, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter if we take one or two meetings to do that. Like one meeting is a draft and second one's like where we approved it. It doesn't matter at this level.
Also, Stephen, you were saying um that for the complete streets, that. It's uh at a high level, but you and your people are doing the details.
Putting the detail, we just need a guidance of what you guys want to go.
Different than what we used to do before. It seemed like before you were around, we used to do a lot more details involved with complete streets. We did high level, but I think we did more details also.
What do you mean by details? I mean, are we talking about, yeah, the complete street commission to give us. Location where the crosswalks at, what kind of strappings we're talking about, uh, location.
Well, in some cases, yeah, we were talking about recommendations to that and those kind of details as opposed to just taking. You know, high level and then letting you guys do all the details and then we have to live with what you details that you did. There was more, we were more involved in the details.
It shouldn't be to the level that you guys are dictating our design.
Right, yeah, can I just make, I think Jarden is a good example.
Well, Jarden was an exception.
Um, well, not in the past. Not in the past. Jarden, you've done entire Fremont, was major community input, significant input from the entire Fremont uh restriping. Covington restriping. Um, in fact, there was a subcommittee that worked with staff on the safe routes to school maps. That is, you know, Al- Almond, all the striping on almond, all the striping on, uh, what's this, Portola Avenue. Um, and so on. So typically, the the design is, especially where there is. School routes in, uh, you know, um, impact. Um, the commission has had a chance to review the design along with community input.
Well, I guess that's semantics that we're talking about then. It's because it's not. It shouldn't be the commission's responsibility to to dictate to staff that this is what we want. The staff's done, it should be staff's responsibility to make sure that the laws and and design is followed. And given an opportunity for commission as well as to the public to.
I think that's always been the case.
Yeah, so that, that's what I mean. That's the, that's the semantic, that in the fact that this is an opportunity for the, uh, for. Our design to be presented to the public for a lawful comments.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be to to the point where the commission to dictate to staff saying this is what we want. No, so that's, that's why I said, it's semantics then.
Never dictated.
Yeah.
But it was always a lot of more, uh, knowledge and like complete streets or the the safe routes to school, I should say. That was a whole lot of input from the commission.
Yeah.
And and then your team or the, before you guys took that and took a lot of our recommendations and the details there.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah, and we're going to continue doing that because we're still asking for a public comment. We're still asking for the commission's recommendation. It's just, it shouldn't be to the point where before we even put pen and paper, we need approval from commission on what we want to see. It's, we're going to lay it out as best as we can based on all the recommendations. Yes, we're going to continue coming back and saying, this is what our recommendation is. But we gotta have some, um, how do I say? We have, we have to continue having a means of having public outreach and public comment in what we're proposing to do.
Agreed, but just saying, it's, it's different from what people. I know things changes, get new people involved too. But um, maybe it's just a matter of semantics when you were saying you want the commission to be high level and not detailed.
I mean, I, I was just gonna say, I thought, I thought your comment on on high level versus detail, Stephen, was maybe a little bit more targeted. Or it's like the nature of the conversation that we would have in January with city council. It wasn't saying that like, we don't work with you on a detailed level. I think obviously we are collaborating at a detailed level. And that's also to say like, there are things that staff should have be sort of like mainly their province, right? Like when you're talking about some of the details around, you know, micro resurfacing and things like that, right? Like, that's, that's your area. Yeah.
Yeah, no, what what I'm saying is, I mean, the detail that you guys are asking for is, are we implementing the the request of the public? Okay, so that's where we need to have that public comment to make sure that the public.
This is what we're proposing to do.
Absolutely.
It cannot be to the point where, you know, we have the public actually dictate how the design is going to be done. Is what I'm getting at is. Yeah, no, that's, 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 that's why I said, it's the semantics of how it is being presented.
Being over the public simply. But it just had a little more.
Yeah, I think we're. Yeah, I think we're on the same page. I think we want to, we want to collaborate with staff and we're, we're doing that.
Yeah, and that's what is our intention to continue to do. It's just, we still.
Kind of said it was.
Yeah, got it. Okay. All right, Tom, what else you got? Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, before, like, the one clarification question for Tom was, um, your very first one, is there any action for the, uh. For the commission to, on your first comment about. Yeah.
No, I mean, I was just trying to. You know, some of these things add together or merged and, um, so you look at that and it's like, oh, it's two different things. Um, do we really want to talk about those as two separate things when there is a lot of overlap? It could even just documented or just that. Then we're doing this one here, but it's also going to. Later on, we're going to do express to the city or, you know, um, the other parts.
Last question on this work plan? Is that okay if I ask a question?
This is quick. I was just thinking about, um. One of the questions that Tom asked and also what Stacy was talking about. Um, the, the message that we're sending to the commissioners. But also what we want to get from the commissioners. And I think.
You mean the council members?
It's only a direction from the council members, but there may be some dependencies on some of these things where the council can actually be helpful. And so to identify those dependencies, I mean, the notes perhaps would be a good thing, for example. And I'll just make stuff up. So under bike parking for downtown. For conjecture sake of discussion, which by the way, the commission has not recommended or agreed, I'll put that out there. It's let's say hypothetically that, um, staff and the commission said, oh, wouldn't it be great to have. Um, bike parking cages in the plazas somewhere. Well, maybe we need to talk to the people about that, or maybe the council has to get involved in that. I don't know. But that might be a dependency for that. Or there might be some funding that. Um, transportation doesn't already have in order to accomplish some of these goals. Right? Or you might need involvement if some other organization like to do, um, AP forty-three. I don't know. But we should, I think if we identify those dependencies to the council, that might be a good.
That's a nice little point, Steve. And I wonder if it makes sense to even think through each of these and see. Is there anything that we think specifically, concretely, we either need from council? Or we would want to ask council of, maybe that's a, a useful exercise for each of these, could be clarifying.
Yeah, but don't get too devil in the details. You might want to just take at the big picture, what, what do we as a commission want from council?
Yeah, okay.
I, I wouldn't have more than three asks, because.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. I think in the past, it's been twenty minutes. Yeah, it's not very long. That's why you gotta like, think about what do you, yeah, what's our message and what do we want to? Because, because some council members will have their things, like Lynette will have her thing that she's gonna want to ask us about.
She's, she's off, yeah.
Somebody else might. So, so then, and we will have, we, we have twenty minutes. So what do we want from them? Because we only see them once a year.
Right, absolutely. No, it's, it's a great point about the timing.
And that's why the prioritization, I think, is important, right?
Yeah, we should be very clear.
And and also to have your document clear, because then they know, because then you don't need to go through it. Like, if it's clear to them, then they need no, they need to ask, well, I want that, like, it's clear.
They do ask questions that it can, they can spend the time.
No, I just, I just wanted to get the clarification, because this is twelve goals or twelve projects? Because if you look at, you know, I mean.
Twelve projects with some overlapping.
So it's, it's not twelve goals. I know we're saying twelve goals. It's not really twelve goals, right? Because one, two, three is basically the same, one goal, right?
It's six, it's six.
Right, I just, I just, it seems like there's twelve goals, but there's not really twelve goals.
Twelve rows.
Maybe we can just do, just write down what that is and then list the projects, to be more clear.
So just based on what I'm hearing from the commission right now, it sounds like you're asking the subcommittee to kind of revamp. The work plan as is.
I think, I think. I think prioritize, we know, uh, you know, I mean, I think even in the last meeting we had, right? Like, I remember Scott brought up specifically, we should talk together as a commission with staff about whether. It's realistic to, and wise to push all of these for the year twenty twenty-five. Realistically, like, there's limitations of what we can do and and we shouldn't go in. I personally always live by under promise, over deliver, right? Like, that's just a good rule to live by. Um, and and I think we should absolutely be thinking about that. Uh, we should be realistic and I actually look to other members of the, the commission and staff. Been here for a while, uh, who've seen, you know, calendar years and work plans and and see sort of what percentage we get of that. And what we take away from that. Um, I mean, I've been here for, I guess, a year at this point. And, um, you know, Jardine took up so much of our oxygen in twenty twenty-four, right? Um, and so, you know, what should we anticipate about what's realistic for, for the year? So I think, is that?
Yeah, no.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, because it's, I'm trying to balance the, the staffing capacity that we have.
Yeah, hundred percent. Oh, you're, you're talking about the staffing capacity even just to, like, revamp this document. Yeah, but I think.
But it, just to go along that line of, are we able to make, uh, deliver on what you guys are asking for?
Yeah. I think so.
There's a pretty good eighty percent chance that we, we can do that with existing staffing we have. We just. We just got to be a little bit realistic and how we set that goal.
If, if I could offer a point on that, and I'll look to maybe other members of the subcommittee, other members of the commission, but. Um, what if we characterize it as like, we're not going to add anything to this list, right? And then, you know, depending on staff time, you know, I don't know, maybe, maybe we have a subcommittee meeting that staff supports or or not. Um, but if the subcommittee takes it upon themselves to just take the feedback that we're getting here today. And maybe before the end of this meeting, we actually ask specifically, is there anything that folks feel shouldn't be prioritized for the upcoming year? Shouldn't be on this list or should be sort of made, made part of another priority or something like that? Um, I mean, are you comfortable, Stephen, with us just kind of completing that exercise between now and when we go before council? Yeah, I don't think that's something that we're going to look to staff to spend a bunch of time on outside this meeting. That's, that's my, that's my position.
Yeah, we're gonna recommend that the subcommittee meet again within the next week, so it's fresh on our minds if we can. With the four actions, which is clean up this based off of the feedback from the commission. Summarize this in a one or two sentence, which each of these projects are, uh, remove acronyms. Uh, clean up the goal structure and then prioritize these based off of what we think are priority lists for achievability. And then if we can begin to, also, the last part would be incorporate two, twenty twenty-four into this or unify the structure. And then we begin to plan for, and that shouldn't take us too long. It took us, what, an hour plus to do it last time? And then we can quickly prepare for how we want to present this based off of Stacy's feedback on, like, what are we asking for? What's our ask? What's our, I don't know what the proper, like, structure would be, like, inform, share, ask, whatever that would be. And so that was very clear on how we proceed.
Well, you'll have another meeting, so you'll have another.
The only thing I, um, reinforce, it's already been said by multiple people here. Is that, and what triggered this is when I thought, holy, holy, when Wes was talking about the amount of time that Jardine spent. If San Antonio comes to the table in twenty twenty-five, I mean, you know. Jardine was, what, six blocks long, maybe? And think about San Antonio, the Mount Canadian foothill and. The amount of community that you're gonna get from that and how much time that's gonna take of both staff and the commission. So if that's not on the list, I think it's, it's got to be on the list.
I think it's more realistically about like, what timeframe does, does that work happen in, not is it gonna happen, right? It's like, it doesn't happen in twenty twenty-five, right?
It's gonna happen in twenty.
It's gonna happen in twenty-five, okay. Right, then we have to be there, yeah.
Things after hearing everyone talk. Number one, Steven said eighty percent on your list. Eighty percent in government is great. Keep your list. Wes, we're not in the private sector. So this is not a land of under promise and over deliver. So don't under promise and over deliver.
Can you say it again? I understand what you mean, is that both, both look at private, how do you, how are you framing that?
I'm framing it to get things done. You have to write down as much as you realistically think you can get done. Don't, don't, don't step yourself back. It's, it's not private sector.
A lot of these things are going to be incorporated as part of our street maintenance projects anyway, so that's why.
And that's number one. Number two is, a lot of things are never done in one year in government anyway, so council knows that. The public, the public knows that largely unless they've been here once or have one specific project, so that's okay. The next thing I want to say is important. Harding is not, should not be a standard operating procedure. That is what not to do. And so our commission, a- along with our, our, the partnership with staff, needs to become tremendously more efficient. So we're able to take through a larger volume in here. And and the one feedback that I've given, I think every staff person who's come through the city and now you're gonna get tonight. Is. There's a balance between putting some mats on the wall. there's a balance between putting some mats on the wall and starting with nothing on the wall or on the screen and getting feedback from the residents. What's your problems on this street? Because going and doing a lot of problem, listen, going and doing listening and then trying to address some of the challenges in the design, or if you're not able to, you're not able to, but then when you come back with your design, everybody has already been heard and now they're coming to see what you've come up with and they're gonna give you some feedback on it. But when you start with a design, I have seen it, staff person after staff person after staff person after staff person in the city, you have just given the community something to oppose, you've just handed it to them. So when you're doing a big street, nobody's saying you don't have to follow your engineering standards, guidelines, like, everything that you have to do. They're just saying for a big street, I would start with a community input session. That would be my advice, that's how the Homestead Road Safe Road to School project was done. That's how Sunnydale, I went and sat in on it, that's how they did, there was another project they did that they've done that way. Those are the projects I've seen, they move fast, they, they go, go slow.
Go fast versus start fast.
Go slow to go fast. And the way to go slow to go fast in this city is just list, do a community input listening session first. Even if you have, even if you have three designs already drawn up, don't show them, you know, like, and, and, but you don't have to draw them up. Just ask them, say, hey, we're gonna be making improvements on this street, what are your challenges here? When you're walking, biking and driving, and people are gonna give you a bunch of input. And then if you, and then if your design addresses three of each person's five safety challenges, they're gonna be like, oh, good, you got those three in, what about this thing over here? They're gonna start in a different mindset, okay, I'm gonna get off the soap.
If I could add one, one comment, just in connection with the, yeah, under promise, over deliver, I think, I definitely welcome the feedback from folks, I think one of the things that I and Scott have been thinking about is, we wanna make sure that the plan that we present to council and that we're doing for the city of Los Albos is realistic and that we can accomplish it. And if, if we don't think we can do it in twenty twenty-five, then I don't know why it would be on the list, but absolutely, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be ambitious. We should just, yeah, be realistic. And in fact, if that's not the right way to think about it, yeah, I welcome that too. We wanted to say, here's everything that we think is, you know, important for the city to be working on, and that's the list, then that's fine too.
I would say that, I think Stacy's point is that big projects take a lot of time. So for example, if San Antonio Road wasn't somebody's top of mind in twenty twenty-three, it would not be getting done in twenty twenty-five. So there will be some stuff on this list that isn't gonna get done in twenty twenty-five, but we'll get started in twenty twenty-five. And so not everything has to have a Q one, Q two, Q three, Q four target date to get done, in my opinion, right? Because you might only be halfway through it by Q four. And that's okay, because if you hadn't started, it won't get done in twenty twenty-sense. And so, you know, but you don't take it off the list, because it's gonna be worked on this year, coming year.
That's free to think about, yeah, I appreciate that.
Was the anticipation completion column for us that was provided, was this the format from the city, from the other commissions? Or do we make this?
I believe so.
Our, our vertices verbiage?
It's verbiage ours.
So we, I mean, anticipated, maybe we do like project timeline window, or I don't know how we frame this, so it's, if it is.
No, this is in the library. Yeah, this is, well, this is the format that was provided by the city, and if we wanna deviate from this format, I'm fine.
Okay, I think the anticipated completion column is good, it's fine. I think to Steve's point, and I agree with that, is that everything does not have to be completed in twenty twenty-five. It can be started, like, it, like, some things we wanna complete, but sometimes things carry over. Like, for example, the Seabike ordinance isn't gonna carry over from this year to next year.
Do you want us to put twenty twenty-six on there for some of those?
Well, if I look at the safe routes to school education, like, if you're doing that, like Palo Alto, they have a big focus on that. They've had that big focus for a couple decades, like.
That makes sense to me.
Maybe I wanna just have a question mark in there, maybe wanna have a.
I think, I think one way to reconcile that could be, you know, we think about what are things that we do wanna have happen in twenty twenty-five towards these things? Not, not that they conclude or finish in, in that calendar year. I think it's nicer to show, you know, what work we expect to do in the year, not that it needs to be completed or conclude, yeah.
If I'm thinking, I, this is just off the cuff, I haven't thought about it. Just getting ideas going, because now that we're at saving school education, like, what are our big picture issues and things where council could, we could use some support from council? Like, safe routes to school education is one of them, because the city needs a really strong partnership with the school districts. And that's not something that us alone are gonna create. That's one idea. Money is of course another one. Is always good to talk.
Right. Can I, please, just circle that, so we know what we're working on? Can you bring it back? We can bring it back to what actually needs to get done? So what I'm hearing, high level, one is we wanna simplify, maybe four goals, high level goals. And bucket the projects, I don't think we're gonna pare down on the projects, I think there's agreement that these projects are the right things to work on. But we wanna consolidate and maybe move things around, so we have a set of four to six goals, right? Is that right?
Well, I think you have six goals right now.
Right, right now you have six goals.
But I heard that maybe we need to move things around a little bit from the comments, that I heard from, yes?
I think we could consolidate both projects, I heard a couple of those from Stacy, as well as potentially consolidate goals. And, or towards Steve's point, you know, even just make the way that we present these goals, you know, look more streamlined, so.
Are there, just before we get off this topic, I'd like to hear, to see, are there any, any projects that we have to add on? One is here at San Antonio, for sure, yes?
Yeah, I feel like somebody should go check the project list from a couple of years ago. Because I know that the RRFBs were on there, which is getting taken care of, San Antonio was on there, Fremont Bridge was on there, Crystal Ridge Drive was on there. And that project, nobody seems to, like, I don't know where that's gone. And I don't know if, if there was anything else on there, then I don't have those old lists in front of me. But Crystal Ridge Drive is definitely one, like, happened to that.
I think.
That's in the CIP list already.
Item number nine, the council is correct.
That's, that's in the CIP list already, or got annual resurfacing projects list. Can we come up with an acronym for this, so we can say easy? I like, yeah, we should come up with the acronym, because to me, CIP list seems easier, but maybe.
Yeah, so, so maybe it's not so helpful for council, but it might be helpful for this commission. Maybe in the CIP list, maybe you can put the list of projects in parentheses afterwards. So I stop asking about Crystal Ridge Drive, because I know.
There's a whole spreadsheet, Stacy, that we have, right? We, we worked on the spreadsheet for the last two meetings, there's a, there's a spreadsheet of all those fifty odd projects.
Fifty projects, we, okay.
It's giving them, you know, a list of all the projects.
I don't need fifty projects in there, but usually there's not fifty.
There are twelve for this year, right? That, that list has been finalized already. For twenty twenty-five, the twelve projects has been finalized.
We have fifty.
And then there's probably, that's probably number one, and there's two, three, four, five, how many were the total? Let's call it out now, let's make sure we're on the same page.
Based on the, the pavement index score, correct? This is all based on that.
And I would think there's some projects in that list, like, there's like multiple things for paving, like, don't, we don't need that, we know that. There's always an annual sign update, that's always in there. Like, but what are the streets, what are the, what are the big, what are the projects?
And that's what was provided already, that's what we got.
So you're looking for us to kinda give an asterisk and a pointer, like, here, here those are.
I, I think. But I think Resh is making the point, which is that you've got a CIP list of maybe fifty streets, right? The council doesn't wanna see fifty projects on this piece of paper, one for each street that we're gonna touch or that transportation's gonna touch, that's not the, that's not the objective here, right? The objective here is a higher level, right? I think.
Yeah, I mean, what is the objective that we're trying to accomplish?
So, sorry, I think people are confused, I'm not talking about the fifty paving streets, that list I have, we have. I'm talking about the non-paving projects. So the RRFBs, which we have the status on, the Fremont Avenue Bridge, the the Hetch Hetchy Trail is probably one, I think that's gotten taken care of. And Crystal Ridge Drive had that guard rail that Jim Sandoval said was exposing the city to librility by not being replaced. Like, what's the status of that?
That project is, that project is, should have been a maintenance project, it should have never been a CIP project. It was a design that we could have used in counter standards. The reason why it hasn't gone through with it is because I've noticed that there's other bigger issues that's going on. So until I've determined what that issue is, there's no point of just fixing the guardrail.
Excuse me, with that guardrail?
It's a issue of pavement.
Yeah, because so there was supposed to be a guardrail, and then there was supposed to be, there was gonna be a pavement kind of thing. And then there was gonna be some looking at bison pets, and I don't know if it was all one thing, but there was a thing. And I don't need to go detailed in the Crystal Ridge Drive, but what I, what I really mean is, where's our list of projects that aren't, that aren't, that aren't on that paving list? Because we have that paving list with the fifty streets or how many ever are on there. But where's the list of other projects from a few years ago that, like, has anybody gone back and looked at that to know, like, have we done all of them or which ones haven't we done? And what's the status?
May I ask a general question? I mean, going back to previous lists over and over again. What is the objective? Because we're at a point where we have to pick up at a point and move on. For us to keep going back, we cannot make other improvements that is necessary.
So those improvements were identified as necessary? And it's like we have Jim Wing who comes here every time, like, you know, a couple decades ago, you guys planned Milton Town and when is it gonna get done? So it's just having some eyeballs on what the city has committed.
Can I make a recommendation? Yes, can I make a recommendation? I think, this is why I think, you know, we have number ten, it says, we need a subcommittee, you know, some sort to identify, just, you know, do a triage of what projects that were in the past, that, you know, if at all, is something, how does that fit into our projects going forward, plans going forward? So rather than identify this as part of a work plan, I think we need, we need some work to be done. I don't think between now and January, we're gonna be able to dig this up. Just, at least the subcommittee as we have formulated now. So my recommendation is that maybe that goal that we have of a strategic plan is for us to work on a work plan for next year that brings some of these things together. Let's kinda, okay, I think I take it to your point saying, what is the, what's the point in looking back in the past? The reason why we're bringing it up, Stephen, is, it was identified as a priority in the past, why has it not, why is it not a priority anymore? And like you said, the Complete Streets Master Plan is a plan, it doesn't mean that we have to implement everything in it, right? The city might, city might propose that we change something. I think, we have not done this in the past, but I think this is a good time for us to do, is to maybe set up a subcommittee sometime in the first quarter that goes on for three months or so, that works on just this part of it, is to say, go back, identify what gaps are in the Complete Streets Master Plan, in the Safe Roads to School Plan. We may not implement it in twenty twenty-five, but somehow something we can put for twenty-six, twenty-seven, at least we identify what they are. And I think maybe that's the best way to accomplish.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, is, is basically to lump that with number ten. Lump my, what I just asked with number ten, because it's a little bit slightly different than what you have articulated in ten, but I think it could be included in ten, and that would be good.
So I think that way, you know, there is a forum for people to put into this thing, to say, let's bring the gaps. Hey, why don't, we can say, hey, you know, Crystal Ridge was this, these are the projects, so then we can say, it's a twenty twenty-seven project, whatever, right? We can identify these things need to be done, that's all we're saying we're asking for. Let's just, you know, I, we've not done this about, I think it's time that we did it, because it's obvious from this discussion that there's disconnects as to what these gaps are, and let's identify these gaps and make a better work plan going forward, I guess, right?
So item number nine, right, where it says, review and update long-term CIP project list? We, if we just add and historical to that, so review and update long-term CIP and historical project lists?
I, I think if you simply capture the wording from up above, where you talk about partnerships with other cities and just add that to number eight, I'm sorry, not number eight. Add that, and just say, include existing competency gaps, right?
Yeah, can I, let's not dilute it, my, my, my thing is, eight and nine, eight is specific, you know, that's like, you know, that's the city's current plan. The reason why it's a complete streets, the commission plan is as well, because we're anticipating that maybe designs come for us to review, right? Number nine is then to identify future projects, the input into number nine is the work of number ten, right? So number ten is the complete, the commission's work, it's, it's not, you know, we get some support from staff, but it's really the commission doing the work, you know, identifying those gaps, which hopefully then we present to the city staff and then we see where it goes and how it plays into the CIP projects, right?
I agree.
Okay, so. So we'll try to, we'll take, we'll take a shot at this, maybe next week or the week after, and next week at Thanksgiving, we'll see what we can do. But I think if the staff is okay with it, what we should do is then come up with something, send it out to the commission before the end of the year, before the end of the year, to the rest of the commission for feedback. So individually, you guys can provide feedback based on what we output, is that possible? So that way, but you, make sure that it's not, there's no brown hat issue, make sure. So next week is a short week, and then end of December, there's a two-week shutdown, the city. So two weeks, it starts the twenty-fourth up to the first. So just so that you know about. So we'll have to work on, okay, so maybe the subcommittee can work on, it's just that when we ask for input from the rest of the commission, if you can turn it around pretty quickly. Yeah, that would be, I mean, so, you know, let's say we have a week, we, we make a version of the document, goes out, then inputs within a week or so, and then we'll, beginning of January will be, they will then come back with another version. So, you know, let's iterate a couple of times before we come to the next commission.
Yeah, but you'll have to follow the brown.
No, that's why he'll have to, yeah, he'll want to provide, like, take all the inputs. So you'll have to give individual inputs back to him, and then he can communicate that. We've done this in the past, with the previous work plans and also that letter we used to write to the, to the to the, to the whole council. So anyways, I just wanna still, you know, put this, we add, we add San Antonio. The Hetch Hetchy project, I think that you've got it, I'm not sure if it needs to come back to the commission, yes, correct? Yeah, and then the Fremont Bridge project, does that have to come back to the commission? You don't see any anticipated input, okay. So then San Antonio is the only additional project we'll add to this. Are there anything else that we should? Why don't we just take this, because at least the list of projects, I don't, let's not revisit it again.
I don't have the old list in front of me, but I, I think it's fine to combine it with number ten, that there's just a look back. I, I don't think there's a ton of stuff there, but if the city's made commitments to somebody, it's just good to go look at.
There are a couple of things, you know, where, you know, anticipated completion or status, but things like the Safe Roads to School Education, I think that's like an open statement at this point, I think the commission needs to discuss, has to be in the agenda, and we have to discuss what it is. And I know the staff has been asking to see if maybe an external agency can help.
Until we, he has already started a Safe Roads to School Education curriculum. I'm trying to have a meeting with them to see what it is and see how we can participate.
All right, anything else? No, no, thank you all.
Okay, and maybe we can call it on that item, and I think just to, just to restate, you know, subcommittee will get together, we'll find a time, we can work together. And then, yeah, at the earliest moment, then we'll, this list will be back to Mark.
Sorry, I did have one item, I know that this, I was at the environmental commission last time, on a separate, on a separate item, presenting to them, but as far as Greentown, but they did discuss that a significant portion of the, of the cap goal relies on CSMP implementation. So which basically means for them to achieve. Climate adaptation. Climate adaptation, climate action adaptation plan, that city's plan to reduce carbon emissions by its goals, they have a plan. But implementing that, us achieving those goals means implementing a significant, significant portion of CSMP. I think this is what they're saying, we need to have some cross, I mean, a discussion between the commissions. I think this is something that we take to the council. I, I don't know how to put this.
That's a good, that's a good thing on those, this three of the council.
Because actually, Rashina who is here, she reached the head of the, uh, chair for the, uh, environmental commission. So she actually forwarded her email, she wants to get in contact with, with our chair.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll get together.
Yeah. Um, and if, sure, if you want, I'm happy to be the liaison too, but that's something that we can do as a.
I, I think that's a great idea to, to, to take that up with council. And, and I think it's very related to the, one of the other things that I said to take up with council and maybe they get combined together, which is education. Because in part- partnership with the school district to have an effective education program, because if we don't have a partnership with the school district. And you don't have effective education, then you're not gonna get people out of cars and everybody will be driving to school.
Right, that's, that's a dependency.
And, and that's where a lot of our local miles come from, is people taking their kids to school. And then, and then the other place is to get more of our residents biking to work, which is. Or to the grocery store. If they have parking.
Yeah, there we go. Um, so, so Sresh, to your point, I mean, i- if there's any, is there anything that we think? The commission needs to do to sort of like, yeah, empower you to go liaise with, uh, you know, the environmental commission, uh.
I think we need a vote or something to say, pick somebody to be the liaison, I think that needs to happen. We can do that at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, great.
But we can agendize that.
Yeah. But, but even if we get a liaison to the environmental commission, I still think this should be one of our.
Yes.
Three things that we take to city council.
That sounds great.
Oh, we work with the environmental commission and how we get the school community engaged. And I don't know if they're two items or just one item, because they're very related. And then you're, and then encouraging everybody else to bike, either to work or. The grocery store and the library and the whatever, but then that requires bike parking in all these destinations, not just at the downtown.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Okay, um, thanks for the contributions on that. Um, moving on to training and updates. Anybody need a break?
That's what it says on there, but I could go real quick.
I'll take a break, I'll take a break out here.
Let me, let me pause the recording and then take a break.
Okay, alright. Alright, we're back on. Okay, so we're gonna get a training and update from staff.
Yeah, um, let me share my screen here. Alright, this is the yearly commission updates. Um, I do it every year, so. And this is for the Complete Streets Commission Updates. So basically, I'm just gonna read this, this is all in the handbook. Um, the handbook hasn't been updated. Still to September twenty twenty-three, so we have that. It's all in there, but they want me to go through all this stuff again, so. Uh, I'm gonna go pretty quick. Uh, Complete Streets Commission. Shall submit an annual report to council providing an update of implementation, the Complete Streets Master Plan, as well as an update on any relevant transportation policy or programs. Review and advise on implementation of projects outlined in the CSMP. Annually provide recommendations to council on transportation-related priorities to inform policy, budget, and CFP utilization. Serve as a forum for community input engagement and perform other tasks and duties assigned by the council. We did this last time with the election of chair and vice chair. Commission appoints chair and vice chair annually for first meeting in October, which we did. Uh, no member of the commission may serve consecutive terms as the chair, so they must change annually. So that's where we can, um, vote. Attendance, attendance and participation. Majority members require a person for meeting to take place. Commissioners must attend seventy-five, seventy-five percent of regular scheduled meetings. We have ten a year, so you have to attend, I guess, eight. Right, that's. So eight of them. Which makes sense. Commissioner must let liaison know at least one week in advance of meeting if that they will attend remotely, so you get. So our meetings are Wednesday, you gotta let me know a week, the Wednesday before, if you're gonna do remote, um.
Unless, unless you're like, something come down.
Unless it is an emergency or something, you know, really, like, but if it's other, you know, if you don't have a good excuse, you gotta let me know a week before. Uh, commissioners may attend no more than twenty percent of meetings remotely, so that's what, two? Commissions provide a work.
Is it twenty percent or is it seventy-five percent?
Twenty percent of all the meetings, I think. Uh, maybe well twenty percent know it, that's certainly, you're confusing me now. Commissions provide a workflow for approval to council in the first quarter of each calendar year, which is gonna be in February this year, oh, next year. Missions provide an annual plan to council at the joint meeting. And then this was the, um, uh, basically the, you know, the kind of template of the work plan. Um, I think that's what we've kinda, uh, we've covered today, uh, goal, projects, expectation. Priority source, status, and notes. And also, we also have a, um, commission calendar that we could fill out, so we know what we're gonna be. I think Stacy brought that up in one of the previous meetings, it's like what's coming up, so, you know, um. We, we could start filling that and we know what's gonna happen in that, you know, the next meeting or anything like that, so. I think if we know what's gonna come up in March, we should put it down, so at least everybody's aware, and we can just keep this as, you know, our, kind of, um.
The ma- major agenda topics, more or less.
The journey was the only one we knew every month, but, uh, but, you know, so it'll be good to have a calendar so we know what's gonna come up, so. And, uh, uh, July and December, we don't have any meetings, so that's one thing there. Um, ad-hoc subcommittees, we, we should, we should be familiar with ad-hoc now. Commission may appoint ad-hoc subcommittees consisting of less than the majority of the body to work on specific task. Ad-hoc subcommittee should be focused on one specific topic and shall not last more than one year. Ad-hoc subcommittees must comply with all assets of Brown Act, but do not require meetings to be posted or staff support. Uh, must, uh, uh, subcommittees must be ad hoc, not standing. Commission may appoint ad-hoc committees. Okay, must have a specific topic and timeframe. Cannot be an area of continuing jurisdiction. Cannot be slapped, established in multiple years. Must report findings out to me for, well, commissioner. Commissioners can only serve in one subcommittee at a time. And the motion establishes include that the ad-hoc subcommittee, which, which we did last time, was, um, uh, Commissioner, uh, Vinketrim, um. Basically just, uh, stated all these six items here. Convince all the members of the mission to establish an ad hoc, assist less than a quarter. Includes defined purpose and time to accomplish that purpose is less than one year. Will automatically terminate when the final report is given to the commission or when the time for the science of the commission is met. Unless extended by the commission at a public meeting. Will not be established reviewed in multiple years, and the last one is advisory nature, is not a staff to work on an item or continue jurisdiction. Alright, the current ad hoc subcommittee we have is the work plan. Um, those are the three commissioners. Working pairs, this is the new thing. Um, the thing I wanted to bring up is working pairs, and I did bring it up in the last meeting, um. It's not in the handbook, but it's, because it's, it's, it's not, um. It's not a formal approval, unlike, which require formal approval, uh. Uh, in our limited time and duration, the commission may assign commissioners into working groups. Provide research, information, fact gathering, prioritizing, or other activities related to commission's work plan, so. Um, you know, if you guys want to do some research on things, you could form, uh, a working pair. Or just one per, so working pair, working groups may consider one or two commissioners. Who are able to meet to discuss topics of interest to the commission prior to reporting back in an open meeting to the full commission. The commission may take action in the report or simply receive it. Any questions on the working pairs so far?
I had a question. Um, does. Do you have to agendize this in a meeting to form working pairs?
No.
No. Second is, are, are the working pairs some, some, in some sense, are they formal, are they to be announced that, okay, these two people are part of it?
It does say that, I think the chair has to assign them.
Yeah, so.
But, but, I mean.
Oh, let me, let me continue here.
That would take place in a meeting.
And let me continue here. While working groups are designed to allow, allow commissions to work in a more flexible manner. To respond to requests, initiatives, or discretion, or direction, direction from council, or to move work, work plans forward. There is no limit to amount of working pairs a commissioner can participate in at one time.
Other than Brown.
So that's what I mean, exactly. So there's a difference here. Um, ad-hoc subcommittee is formal, focus on project, work plan development, and working pairs is informal, part of a plan or a project.
So, it's kind of a nice add-on, nice feature.
The other difference is the number of people.
So.
Just one, one or two.
It was in the past, we weren't limited on the number of subcommittees we could have. And we didn't have to have them agendized, so we could just form a subcommittee anytime, and a subcommittee could be two people.
Are we limited now in the number of subcommittees we can have?
No. No. Yes and no, because people can serve on multiple.
Got it, got it, you can't do more than one.
And, and you're limited because you have to put it on your agenda, and you have to have that plan that this will be on the agenda, whereas in the past. We, people used to serve, be able to serve on multiple subcommittees, and you used to be able to just, the chair could just form them at a meeting without a special agenda.
Yeah, that's kind of working.
I don't think our commission ever had so many of these things ever, but.
So it gives you, it gives you an option there, you know.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Exactly, you know, if you do a research or something, I think you guys were talking about.
But the chair has to assign, correct?
That's what I saw on the slide.
You cannot just form, so two people just can't decide to form.
Well, you guys gotta, you guys, you guys gotta prove.
Like the first, the first one, yeah.
There you go, alright, that's it.
A mission may assign.
Where is it? Uh, commission may assign commissions to working.
May is not required, I'd say, it's a loose term. I, it's not must. I, I would read that, I would read that differently, Scott. I would say that they're saying, you, you can assign them or not assign them. You can choose to do it, not, not say that they can independently form, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, you can read it both ways, and you can, and if the commissioner came and says, hey, I'm a working pair of one.
I have a report.
Tonight, I have a report.
That's what I thought it was, yeah.
That's an excellent point, which I did see, which is.
That's why I said to me.
What is your question?
I don't think you have to clarify it, it's allowed in the, if the, as long as the rules allow it, you can do it.
I don't think there's anything in any of this that says that one commissioner cannot go and use their free time however they would like. And they can already come back and give a commissioner's report or have an informational item, so I wouldn't have read that as forbidden up to now, and I don't read it as forbidden by.
You don't have to, I don't think you have to, because it's not, you know, you don't have to do a formal approval process. So you could just go after, you start doing your.
Like every week, but as a commissioner.
Right. So on the next agenda items, commissioners report, I could just say, hey, I've got a working pair.
Yeah, you could just bring it up.
So what you're saying is, myself and Scott, we can decide to do something together and we say we have a working pair? Yeah, let's say next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, Scott and I say we work on something and say we are a working pair.
I decided to work on this.
It's not for.
Because it's not, you know, it doesn't have to be a formal, that's basically what I'm reading.
Yeah, as long as whatever is written, as long as whatever you propose to do follows those rules, you can.
The main thing is, I think, is you don't talk to other commissioners with your, when your one, two.
I wanna pull the, I don't wanna pull the. But I am a lawyer. I would read that differently. My interpretation is exactly what I said, which is, this authorizes the commission to assign people into working pairs, nothing else, that's how I read that. I don't actually care what people are gonna do on that meeting, so go do it, that's how I read that.
But you run that sign people to do it, then just all of a sudden, they come up and then I'm not, I'm a working pair.
Not about what I want, yeah.
The reason why I want qualifications, I don't wanna be violating any Brown Act.
All the Brown Act is discussing with other people.
I don't, the problem is it's not clear and I don't wanna be in trouble.
Yeah.
And I, there is.
I think it is clear, I think Art just told you, the Brown, you, you can go talk to other commissioners outside this meeting as is. You, you just cannot violate the Brown Act. You cannot have a majority of people in any kind of.
The only thing, the only thing I would add to that, Stacy is.
Yeah.
To the extent this formalizes something, then I, I read it, I read it differently, yeah. I mean, anybody previously was, was welcome to go talk about something. Yeah, yeah.
But you're talking about the Brown Act, Sresh, and I'm talking Brown Act. There's nothing in the Brown Act that says. You, you and another commissioner can't go talk to each other outside of. As long as you don't make a majority.
Yeah.
And then there's commissioners' reports. Commissioners have always been able to come. Suzanne, when she was on the commission. Used to sometimes come and give like a report, like I did this, or I read this, or I did that. We just haven't, besides my VTA stuff, we just don't avail of that too, too often.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it, it's never been disallowed to do that.
Bullet one says, you know, unlike a subcommittee. Which requires a formal approval and our limited inside, uh, scope and duration, the commission may assign commissioners into working groups to provide. So we could say, we wanna do a working group on said topic. We will, two of us will go do that working group and then we will come back.
Yeah, the only difference between what you and Stacy are saying is that's a formal assignment. And Stacy's is an informal assignment.
Agreed.
And Stacy's is like, you know, I'll call a commissioner and say, hey, let's grab coffee. There's something that we can do some research on and then report back to the commission, and all I heard Wes say is that would be fine with him.
And I think the key, the important thing is if that happens, then for the commissioners, identify saying, no, I have discussed this with another commissioner, so I can be part of your group. That's important.
Exactly, I think, maybe changing is important.
That is, that is super important, so the point I'm making is, the point I'm just making, I understand the Brown Act. But the, the potential for you inadvertently doing something is very high, because this, so you gotta be super careful, that's all.
Right, I agree.
I, yeah, I think everybody has to be careful of the Brown Act. I think I don't know how much people on this commission talk to each other outside our meetings, so I don't, I don't know how super high the challenge.
So, sorry, continue. Let's just, can we just finish this thing? Where am I at now? Okay, the difference, uh, informal. Commissioner liaisons, I think we were just talking about commissioner liaisons, right? Um, commissions may assign individual commissioners to act as liaison to other boards, commissions, or agencies without establishing an ad hoc subcommittee. The full commission should be updated in public. The positions of the liaison to be in alignment with the positions the commission or the city council are taking if they are considered a topic. Uh, can appoint official commission liaison with any extra organizations, and we have a current one is the VTA B-PAC, is Commissioner Banerji.
And then I would just say for the public, the way I interpret the bullet on the previous slide, which says that the liaison should update. What is it? The full commission should be updated in public. I interpret that to be, I give you, I can give you an update in this meeting.
Yeah.
Or if I send something to Art and he emails it out to everybody, that's also available to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna make that clear for the public.
On record. So our current is, is Commissioner Banerji from the VTA B-PAC. So I think you guys were talking about maybe, um.
Agendizing.
Having somebody do a, um, a council liaison to one commission.
Environmental.
Environmental, so that's who we think that could be at. Uh, we have the council liaisons, which is, uh, our current one is, uh. I think this is what we didn't do last year, I think, is commissioner, uh, council liaison will meet with commission chair and staff liaison once per year at a minimum, as well as a joint meeting. I think we need to do that. I think we'll have a new, uh, we'll have a new, uh, council liaison, I don't know when they're gonna assign the new ones.
And I just think like they do do a new one every year.
Every year, yeah.
Again, not the same, yeah.
Council liaison should not direct, guide, or unduly influence the policy-making work for the city's advisory bodies. Alright, it's, uh, for, uh, co- conflict interests, perceived conflict interests, incompatible activities. Perceived conflict interests for a commission may arise from personal relationships.
Yeah, that's a question I'd want.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Eighteen. Okay.
Maybe just wanna put city council, could you say council liaison? Why would you just put city council? Cause that's where you.
Maybe just want to put city council, because you say council liaison, why would you just put city council, because that's what you're talking about, right? City council?
Yeah, council liaison, yeah. That's what they're called, council liaisons.
Because I think that might be different than the city council. The city council is what they give, you know, like in ours case, salad.
Yeah, yeah. And what does it say on there, uh, I think there, does it say council liaison on there? That's what, that's, they're called council liaison. So they are the city council.
Yeah.
Council members. Perceived conflict interest for a commission may arise from personal relationships, financial interests, serving of bodies or boards. And this is just a template they gave me to do, so I just cleaned it up for our complete street commissioners, so if you have any questions on these, it's definitely, um, contact the city clerk. Uh, over live facility managers under the district of the commission, or when it appears that commissioners' private interests impact official duties of a commissioner, or influence his or her decision-making. Commissioners will notify staff liaison, commissioner must disclose perceived conflict of interest before participation, participating in discussion, and commissioner will seek out advice from the city attorney or the FPPC, I don't, the FPPC.
Yeah, the financial and something commission.
The state commission.
Okay, per se law, public officials include commissioners may not engage in any activity for compensation that is inconsistent, incompatible, or in conflict with their official duties with the city. And the city, uh, is, ultimately, the responsibility of the commission, uh, commission member to identify whether they may be engaging in incompatible activities or have a perceived conflict of interest. The city attorney should be consulted as early as possible on any matters regarding incompatible activities or perceived conflicts of interest. And we know who the city attorney is, right? Everybody know?
Jolie.
Jolie, uh, yeah, Jolie Keese. And then California environmental quality, I had a sequel, sequel requires government agencies consider the environmental inconsequential action before approving plans and policies, or committing to a course of action on a project. Most actions by adversary bodies will not qualify as a sequel project, requiring additional steps. Commission liaisons will check whether the project requires sequel review prior to commission review. Questions? That's Nick, right? Nick is the Development Services Department Deputy Director, right?
Yeah.
Nick Horns. And then, any questions, concerns, or anything, please contact the staff liaison or the council liaison. And that's the presentation. We, we gotta do that here, so. We'll do that again next week, November. So any other questions or anything, or concerns? I think it's pretty straightforward, right? Working pairs, again, it's informal, you can start, yeah.
Yeah.
Make one up now, if you want. We don't need to prove it, we don't need to do anything.
There we go.
You just, you know, I think one of the things was doing some research. I think you guys wanted to do more research on like, previous projects, I think is one. Does she want to look, I think Commissioner Banerji wanted to look into that.
I'm not gonna do that, the word.
Yeah, part of the work.
Okay.
Cool, is that the training?
That's the training.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
You know what we didn't ask was, we didn't ask if there was any public comments for the work plan, right? But since we're, nobody's here.
Yeah.
But there was a written public comment, and it is on the packet, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we've got some, some input, okay, thanks. Informational items, does anybody have any? Any report outs? We've got them, okay. Commissioners' reports?
I have the VTA BPAC one. Um, so at the November VTA BPAC meeting, we largely had county-related items. And Chris Lamb, who's the deputy director of Santa Clara County Road and Airport, will go there and do this on general. And then he also did a response to public concerns on pedestrian and bicycle safety along county expressways. I think I mentioned that before, is that the VTA BPAC keeps getting public comments about the expressways. Um. And then there were, and then, and then specific in the agenda item, and then there was also some discussion on San Thomas Expressway and connecting some trails and things. Um. Yeah, the San Thomas Trail Extension. We looked at that, if anybody cares, they can follow up with me. And then we also discussed the, this was a VTA program, the Equitable Vehicle Miles Traveled Mitigation Program, which VTA is designing as a countywide program, and all the different agencies, the cities in the county can choose to participate in that. I think they're waiting to find out which cities are participating. Um, and then we got an update on the active, the county's active transportation plan. So I don't know if anyone else, I had sent it out before anyone else from here has taken a look at that. I think in the big picture, I don't have everything written in front of me, but there was a long discussion, public comments and a long discussion at the committee. I think some of the things that my fellow members brought up are, there are some proposals to add rumble strips. I don't know which roadways, they want to add those on. I won't be discussing foothills specifically because of the location of my residence, but the VTA allows me to participate on a countywide perspective, so be aware. Um, and then some of the other discussions are around the county's proposing, um, pathways along some of the expressways that would have a physical barriers on one side of the road, but then not putting bike lanes in on the expressways, which is what some of the activists and some of the other members are asking for. Um, so be aware. Um, and then they also have, they're doing some other things, I think, that are good, that was actually first put in at Foothill and, um, this location, I can talk about, Foothill and Bylucky's. Stop bars, you know, in front of the intersections, which is like, thank God, and like hive visible crosswalks, you know, like these things are long overdue.
I was gonna ask you.
Oh, a stop.
Railway crossing.
No, a stop bar is, before you get to the crosswalk, there's just a white line that tells you where to stop your car. So, so you're not stopping at the crosswalk, because the county expressways, right now, the crosswalks don't have stop bars. And then people stop their car right on, yeah, yeah. Um, so there's some good things in there. There, there's, there's other things in the plan that say they're gonna, they have a new toolkit, that they're gonna change some of the free right-hand turns, and it says they're gonna eliminate some. They're gonna reconfigure some, and I asked a sort of rhetorical question, and this is county-wide, but like, how do they decide which ones stay the same, which ones get reconfigured, and which ones get eliminated? And then for the ones that they have reconfiguring, they have a new design, and so it looked like, right now, that's like, the turns are tight. It looked like to bring it up in a wider ring turn, and I think the idea is you get more visibility of the pedestrians in the area. But I was looking at it in the comment I made at the meeting, like, okay, you get more visibility, but as a driver, you, you know, it's faster, I think. So, things to be aware of. Yeah.
That's a cool question, Stacy.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned, you know, the expressways came up, and obviously we're talking about foothills, so I guess it is, it is the case that, that VTA BPAC looks at, like, in particular, the stretch of foothill that goes in and through Los Altos?
So, VTA BPAC, so this item is a countywide plan, so it's, so when, and when we say countywide plan, it doesn't mean every street in the county, it means the county-owned and controlled streets, which are, is the expressway system, and is the unincorporated roadway network, unincorporated county roadway network. The, the VTA BPAC will, when the county takes on the item of the, there's a study that's supposed to be done for foothill, and I don't want to discuss it. The, the VTA BPAC will have that item on our agenda, but there's nothing that prohibits a local commission from having the item on their agenda. I, yeah.
So, just a question for you and Steve, and which is that, when the county has a plan to change something in, on Foothill Expressway, where it goes through Los Altos, do they inform your department so that we can have a discussion about that as a commission?
They do provide us plans, and they do ask for our comments.
And then would that typically come, uh, be put on the agenda, on the commission agenda?
It could. Uh, sometimes though, the deadline for comments doesn't correlate with the, uh, with the commissions. But just kind of giving a heads up.
Yeah, it would be really great if, even in that case, if we were aware of what was going on and just.
Can I have a little question to you, um, or for Stephen, I guess? Um, maybe not. This, this is the county active transportation plan. Do you know how often this is updated? Or this is kind of.
Oh, they, they've never had an active transportation plan before. They've never had a bike plan, they've never had a pedestrian plan. This is the first time they have an active transportation plan, and I would assume, like our CSMP, this is not gonna be updated very often. And, and the other thing to the county's credit is, there's also a countywide trail plan that kind of goes through the parks and then connects parks to other parks or destinations. That plan used to exist. They updated that plan recently, but the, but the park, the, the county parks people worked with roads and airports. So there's supposed to be some consistency, you know, how you flow and how you connect things. And the other thing that the county did as part of, I think that countywide trail plan, is there was this tiny little gap on Foothill, I think Foothill Boulevard, like from where Foothill Expressway ended, right at two eighty to Cristoria Drive, that nobody was covering. And so I raised that issue, like, three times, and finally, they said they were gonna put that in. So, so that little connectivity. So I also feel that the county did a good job in partnering with the, the, the county roads people did a good job in partnering with the person right from the.
Yeah, a second follow-up question. Um, remind me if I'm wrong, but did they come in and present to us sometime just before Marissa was her last meeting?
They, they did come and present to us, and the city attorney at that time told me to recuse from that, so I didn't sit in that. But then afterwards, I talked with Jolie, and she told me to go to the VTA board office, and the VTA board office said I can participate in these countywide items, but I can't participate. Probab-, I probably can't participate in a foothill project that's hits within five hundred feet of my house.
And I, I, so just a follow-up question, I think what Commissioner Katz was saying was, um, um, maybe it's a good idea for, for us to invite them to come and present at the meeting. Rather, you know, I know that, Stephen, you're saying they, you know, they usually send the projects, but if they are, if they have availability, it may be a good for them to come and present the active transportation plan to the commission, so the public, the public gets a chance to listen to it as well.
I think that's a great idea.
Um, so maybe think about it as a.
Yeah, I would encourage that, and it seems like their approval deadline is getting pushed out, because they were like, oh, next month, we're getting this approved, and then the board of supervisors this, and then from what was in their slides, and verbally at their meeting, like, oh, this county committee is not gonna approve it this month, that's gonna happen early next year, and then the board of supervisors this time, so, yeah.
Then, the only other, last question I had was, so you talked about a few items, maybe, I don't know, this part of the toolkit, these rumble strips, this physical barrier, the part of the toolkit, or do you know they're specific, to specific designs of specific streets?
So, so the, the, the two, I think the two things I talked about were the free right turns, either elimination or design. Those were in the toolkit. I, off the top of my head, I can't quite remember if the rumble strips were, I think the rumble strips were in a toolkit. So I don't know which roadways they get applied to.
These physical barriers, uh, even though there may not be bike lanes, that's specific street design, or again, the toolkit thing. Yeah, I think it would be good for them to come and talk to us about these, and first to know.
Yeah, I think the physical barrier thing was largely, uh, I think a countywide expressway proposal. But I think you're right, it, it, it would be.
I, I almost think we should add this to the work plan, to be honest, like, even just like.
No, let's find out, which, I think it's more than the work plan, let's have them come and talk to us.
Yeah.
Maybe we do a presentation on the active transportation.
Great, yeah.
And you could specifically focus on how that might affect, I think foothill, in parts of some of the unincorporated county, I think this is like, I don't know, maybe parts of Rancho and so on, um, that is, that is adjacent to Los Altos, I think would be good for us to know.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the countywide, and just to add, the countywide trail plan, then, that also looped through Rancho San Antonio. So that's the kind of the closest it comes into Los Altos, and that's also just worth being, being aware, aware of. Yeah.
Alright, great. Um, thanks for the reports, thanks for your work on that, um. Potential future agenda items, is there anything else beyond what we've discussed today that we want to agendize?
I think you should talk about a mountain commission liaison, maybe agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. Agendize the environmental commission liaison. Uh, we already got to that, but yes, let's, let's make sure we do that, please.
May I ask a question? This is not an agenda item.
Yeah.
There's something that just came up there recently, um. How do I say this? There's a grant that is available through the MTC to do a traffic analysis study. One in particular that I've been trying to get for since I've been here is analyzing Homestead and Foothill about the realignment of those intersections. Uh, there is a grant that is currently available, the, the Homestead Trails Project is willing to be a partner on this, but I'm just getting into this, and I'm not sure if I'm gonna be needing a, a letter of support from this commission. Um, this will be a grant to do a study on how I can realign, um, that intersection, so. In an ideal situation, I would like to signalize, um, the curvature was coming in, so it allows more of a protected, um, intersection for bicyclists to continue on, on, on Homestead on grant. And this is something that I've been trying to find funding source, but if I do need the letter of support, um, I may be asking from this commission to provide that for me. So, because it's not an agendized item, I cannot formally request it, but I may be requesting it. Um, on the next, and I'm trying to work with VTA, um, MTC right now to see if I could get that letter of support in January, when we do have the commission meeting. So it may be something that I maybe wanted to ask and talk about.
Thanks, Stephen. Would it, would it make sense to have it be, uh, I was just gonna say, would it make sense for us to go ahead and propose to agendize it for January, and if, if we don't need it, or it's not time, we can always pull it, yeah, alright, let's do that.
But that's.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and I think even if you, I think if you talk about a project, as long as the commissions talk about the project, even if we have an agenda as a letter, I believe the chair can write a letter on behalf of the commission, because the commission's talked about the projects and, yeah.
I'm still working on the kinks, I'm still trying to get more in-depth into this. But this is just gonna be strictly a study on what options I have to do this, so that, in the hopes that ultimately I could go for additional funding, while the Homestead Trail Project may be stalled for a while.
I would encourage you, in addition, to request the VTA BPAC to also.
I'm gonna have to do that.
For you with a letter? I don't, I'm the chair, so.
Like I said, just now getting into this, because it was not something that I was going to go after, because, because of how we're always locked out because of socioeconomic, but it may be something that I'm looking into now.
Please pursue.
Good question. Uh, Stephen, what's the source of this grant?
It's, um, oh, I forgot what the MTC said, but it's basically, there's some federal money involved in it.
Okay, so this is part of the, is this part of the federal infrastructure plan, funding?
Like I said, I'm just getting into this.
Do you know what, what amount of money is available?
Only three hundred thousand for this category.
Three hundred thousand for the category?
For our category, which is the smallest.
The study.
Just strictly to do a study.
Yeah, the three hundred thousand dollars per project, per proposal?
Per, per project.
You would be able to apply for a three hundred thousand dollar budget for this particular study? And do you expect, maybe we should take the discussion when we get the agenda item, but is there anything else you can bundle with that as part of, as traffic study?
Because I'm trying to do a safety enhancement for this.
And you expect that, 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 that project will cost three hundred thousand?
I'm estimating three hundred thousand, because I'm gonna, the design recommendation is gonna be pretty extensive. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be looking at different facets of that intersection.
The grant is not just the study, but also a design proposal.
Well, it could be utilized for design. Well, it could be utilized for design proposal, but the maximum that is allowed is three hundred thousand, and the three hundred thousand does not allow um, the full-blown design. Because if I have a design, okay, how do I do this? If I have a study, I have a preliminary layout, I could apply for another grant in the future. And the thought is, if I do this, it also helps me to do a future grant application. But it also allows VTA to go after a grant later on in the future for the Homestead project, to say that they're adding on to what we are hoping to do. So, I'm trying to build a nexus for this thing.
Who could you, please, maybe offline, send me, send us the link to where the grant is and what the. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Okay, great.
One more thing, um, for the future agenda. Uh, and it has to do with downtown safety improvements. Um, there's been a lot of publicity about what the plans are to do with some of the parking clauses. Warding, housing, theater, all that kind of stuff. I think it would be great to have a meeting with whoever kind of knows where the downtown um, capital plans are in, in process, and that includes major developments. We haven't talked to the planning commission in a long, long time. And if we're gonna do safety improvements around downtown, I think it behooves us to understand what the plans are actually for major developments downtown, whether it's the parking clauses, or whether it's, you know, um, big new four-story buildings that are going up, that might affect pedestrian cycling, traffic, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What's the specific ask, I guess, to clarify?
So, the ask would be to, um, have somebody from the planning department come and provide us with what they see happening in a calendar year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe, given things that are not just conjecture, but, you know, um, strong possibilities, if not already approved.
How do we typically, uh, coordinate with other commissions to have folks come and give a talk? Like, obviously, we had environment reached out to us and showed up, uh, it's actually like, you know.
I don't think it's another commission, Wes, I think it's a. It's the staff.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we're actually talking about, yeah, planning department, yeah.
I'm just trying to think right through, basically, based on what I know about what's going on in the downtown area. There is some proposals, but nothing is solid at this point in time. So, whatever the planning, uh, planning department does provide, it could drastically change.
Just for an example, I know this personally, because, um, I just know some of the people. But, right near the corner of, um, of Maine State, right, where the, um, Fisher Science Monitor little offices today, that several of those buildings are gonna be demolished, and it's ready to be improved, but a four-story condo complex with, um, a round floor commercial there. Now, that's gonna change kind of the traffic pattern there, and so, when we're thinking about what goes on, I don't know what else is being planned in the, you know, in terms of, now, that's the parking clauses, but that really will have an impact, I would expect on, you know, driveways, lots of access, all those kinds of things. That it would be great if, um, we knew about it, if we're actually thinking about doing something in terms of traffic calm in downtown. Anyway, potential future agenda.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Does that make sense?
It does, I'm just trying to think how we're gonna be doing this, because in my discussion with the tra, uh, planning department, I mean, they come and talk to me very early about some of the proposed improvements and so on. A lot of them are just proposals with no solid plans ready to go, so. I'll go and talk to the planning department.
Because, you know, what I'm thinking about is when they were developing a lot of the properties on First Street, we did have that kind of presentation, and it was really helpful to think about that. And some of the things that we then could give ideas to the planning department about in terms of sidewalk access, bike parking, all those kinds of things.
Just a quick follow-up question, I know that we did participate in approval in, in the, in the review phase of those downtown projects. Um, are we, are we going to continue that, or do you, what, I know that we came up with a checklist and we're done with it, I guess, so. I think that process is changed, I mean, that's what Steve, you may be referring to.
That process, so the process to, who's involved in the review of individual development? Proposals has changed, and, and that's council approved that. And, and the lot has to do with the pressure from state affordability housing. There was a direction by council at one point for our commission to come up with some generalized things, I think the bike parking guidelines got done. But the other stuff, Marissa started working on it, I, I don't, I forgot about that, and we didn't think about it when we were talking about the plans for next year. I don't know where, what's happened to that.
I think that's what I'm kind of going with this is, um, I don't know, I, I know that, um, there was, um, there was some change to the city policies to how we're gonna do that, and it may be, um, it may be good for us to understand what that is, and.
In terms of objective standards?
Yeah, well, more than objective standards, there were this list of things we were gonna, you know, different area, we had, we had identified like, seven areas or something? Six or seven areas, and we did the bike parking, and then there was a bunch of other things we were going to go do. But then, um, I'm not sure, um, if that, that process is on hold, or something else has superseded that process. And this is including, this included things like, you know, parking, and second, regress, ingress and egress to parking garages.
Loading zone.
Loading zones, policies, and these kinds of things, so, which affected.
And longer-term downtown parking plans.
Bike walkers in their parking garage.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, yeah, bike parking, yeah, yeah. So, there was, there was a whole, um, list of items, and then also, I think, that kind of triggered when we would do like, a traffic study or not, um, so anyways, I think that's what Steve is referring to, we get to get an idea and update on what's.
I'll talk to the planning department, yeah. The, the, one thing, one thing I might add to that suggestion, and I don't know the ins and outs, you guys were involved personally in some of the stuff, but I think even with the direction some of state law has taken around, you know, objective standards and things like that, I'm not aware of anything that precludes, like, commissions from weighing in or providing input about what we think is safe, or is a good design, or best practice. So, yeah, I think that's still, no reason why we can't, you know, still engage in that way, so, anyway.
I just have a quick, uh, a quick question for, or where we adjourn, which is, um, when we used to have Zoom meetings, you'd know how many people are actually attending. Um, now that it's broadcast publicly for people to watch this public meeting, as a commission, um, it would be nice to have a sense as to how, just how many eyeballs are.
I could see, so, there was actually, there was, yeah, there was two, but it was actually three total today.
One of which is probably our, our liaison.
Because when you have, when you log in, you have to put your name, so that you gotta know yourself, you know, you see the names out there, so. So, we do know. Yeah, or two now, but yeah. Yeah.
Awesome, well, um, only one thing left, we can adjourn for tonight, thanks everybody for your time. Uh, and it is.
Carefully going home, just in case the weather's bad.
Yeah. Atmospheric river, stay safe.